Earl Balmar in the Asbury Park Press on December 19, 2018, and notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building.
Could everybody please join me in saluting the flag of our great nation?
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody could just remain standing for a minute for a moment of silence for our troops and their families, and for all our emergency service first responder personnel. And also, I'd like to mention, since our last meeting, Muffy Sinelli passed away. She was the face in our tourism booth for many years, and if anybody ever knew who she was, she always had a smile on her face and really helped us out with tourism. So, just a moment of silence or keep her in your thoughts and prayers. Okay, moving on to workshop discussions. April, you want to talk about the flood plan that we have?
Sure. So, our engineering firm and our flood plan manager has given me a copy of our flood damage prevention ordinance, which I've given you guys a copy of. Basically, there are some changes that we are required to make to continue in the community rating system program. So, we'll be looking to make those changes. It's just adding some definitions to the flood damage ordinance. There are other changes that we can make if we would like, which would create higher standards for people who are building new construction, elevating their homes or renovations. If that's something we wanted to look into, it would help towards our point system and the community rating system, but it's not something we're required to do. But there are several higher restrictions that we can place on properties if we choose to. So, I'm just looking for some recommendations on how you would like this ordinance to be drafted so we can introduce it at the next meeting.
Does this have to be done once a year?
No, this is reviewed every five years.
Every five years, alright. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but probably just make the changes that are required because this way we don't put a hardship on people that are trying to build in our town or have the heights going up.
Yeah, those higher standards were very pie in the sky. In a perfect world, they'd be fine, but in reality, the practical world, it just makes it too hard for people to do any kind of new construction. Those kind of things, the flood elevations and all that, the zoning board's been dealing with that since Sandy, so a lot of what's in there, we're already doing anyway. So, I think it's, you know, just keep it the way it is.
Yes, one of the sections they suggested that we add, we already do, so it's just cleaning that up.
Yeah.
And then, the two stricter changes would be, right now, if your flood elevation is, say, 10 feet, you have to, the bottom floor of your house has to be 10 feet plus one. There's a suggestion that we could make that plus two or three. And then, the other thing is, is when you're renovating your house, there's that 50% calculation if you're renovating more than 50% of the value that you are required to meet the flood regulations. Suggestion was, we could lower that to 40%. Yep, so.
No. Well, I think that probably we do just what's probably required. Jim, you have any?
Yeah, I think so too. We don't want to put any more hardships on our residents, but, you know, certainly we want to make sure that the improvements they're making to their lots are within the guidelines so that their investment can be protected.
Okay, thank you.
Pat, anything?
No, we discussed it, and just as April explained, don't want any hardship on our residents, we've had enough, so I think it's good to go.
Just one other thing on workshop that I want to bring up before we move on, is we have the Taylor Pavilion on for second reading tonight, and just so everybody knows what we are changing with the use of the Taylor Pavilion. And this does not affect, like, our schools using St. Rose, Women's Club, the St. Vincent Paul Society, or the Circle of Friends, or anybody that uses the Pavilion now. What this changes is going to be for anybody that want to use it for weddings, retirement parties, or anything like that. So, the way that it was, and the pricing that it wasn't, and I've talked about it at a few meetings, it was actually costing the borough of Belmar money in utilities compared to what we got. So, what we're going to do is, the pricing structure is there, there's in-season pricing, there's out-of-season pricing, there's daytime pricing, but the main thing is, what we're doing is, we're putting about 10 or 15 different caterers in place, and everything is going to go through the caterer. As far as the security, the cleaning, everything has to be done. Anybody that wants to use our Taylor Pavilion, they're going to have to pay our prices, but they're also going to have to go through an approved caterer so that there's no cooking on the stove in our kitchen, and they leave it a mess, and Mike Campbell and his GPW guys have to keep cleaning it all up. So, it's become a problem, and the way the whole thing was set up, that's the changes we're making. And so, just before we have the second reading on, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that, if anybody has any questions about it. The Belmar residents, on any of the pricing, is half price, so anybody from Belmar still gets the reduction in pricing. But, and then, we left the section in there for mayor and council. If somebody comes in with a good program that we think is deemed good for Belmar and the Belmar community, we have the decision to waive the pricing for them. So, that's basically what the changes are going to be. So, that's all I have for workshop. Anybody else have anything that they want to talk about before we move on? Okay, we're going to move on to petitions. Anybody have any petitions in the audience that they want to present to the council? Alright, seeing none. Approval of minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 21, 2019 meeting.
Give approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCracken?
Yes.
Okay, reports of council. Councilman McCracken.
He's not here.
Obviously, it was sort of a short time, if you count in the holiday between our last meeting and our meeting tonight, but the fire company and the VFW had a very nice Memorial Day celebration over at Monument Row that many of our residents attended. It was a very different perspective for me this year in that I had a cousin who was a Marine, was killed in the line of duty. So, you know, I certainly have a deep respect for all of those who've served our country and kept us protected and free, and I'm grateful to the fact that there are organizations that do nice services and remembering of our heroes on those days. So, I'm grateful to those organizations that held those events on Memorial Day. We had a Belmar Housing Authority meeting on Monday night. Things are relatively status quo there. It was a quick meeting, the bills are paid, everyone seems happy with the new maintenance manager there at the building who's doing a good job and got some positive feedback. So, I'm grateful to be able to represent the council with that organization.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wong?
Yes, I'd like to talk about the community policing program, and the fact that it's late, I'll take the blame on that one. I was down to wearing these to put in all the email addresses and whatever, and it took longer than I expected. I was hoping to have it up by Memorial Day, so we're two weeks late, I'm sorry. I'm sure you've gotten your test, a test was sent out. If you didn't, if for some reason you didn't get the email, please send your email, I just need your name, you don't need address or anything, to me at pwanbelmar.com, and then I'll re-enter it, because sometimes I may have taken, gotten a net where a com or a different number. Like I said, it was tough transcribing by hand, but it's done, and we're ready, we're ready to go, so I'm very happy. But again, if you didn't, anybody listening out there, if you didn't get the test message, then just send your email to me, and we'll put you in the system, and then, we're up and running, we're ready to go. Okay, that's my report. Our Parks and Recreation meeting was scheduled for tonight, but we had to move it, so that will be in another two weeks, I believe. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to do a shout out to two students, one current, one former. I also attended the Memorial Day ceremony, and I wanted to give a shout out to young Julia Nicolay, who played the trumpet, played God Bless America, and played taps, hit the high F, really great job, really, really good of her to show up. I think one of the best things about that ceremony, and they also participate, the students from Belmar Elementary Band that participated at the Veterans Day ceremonies in November, it gives the students a chance to see and interact with veterans, senior citizens in some cases, and it gives them a perspective that they, I don't think they normally get. So, I was really proud of her to do that. Also, a former student, not even so young anymore, Taylor Fowler. Taylor's a daughter of Sharon and Manny. Sharon's on the library board, and Manny, many of you know, he's on the zoning board of adjustment. They're neighbors of mine down 11th Avenue. Taylor got herself a joint legislative resolution from the state of New Jersey, Senate and General Assembly. Taylor Ann Fowler was inducted into the Red Bank Regional High School Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame, which will be held, it was already held on May 3rd. Let's see, she was a member of the Red Bank Regional High School's class of 2018. That makes her a Belmar Elementary School class of 2006, that's great. She was graduate of Stevens Tech, Stevens Institute of Technology. She had a considerable insight on the First Docent for the Colleges of Arts and Letters, and she lent her expertise as a study abroad ambassador. Yes, she's been over the pond many times. Now, she's enjoyed a superb career as a project manager with Netflix, and then went on to get a position as a community specialist with Disney Music Group. Taylor is an amazing young woman, just going up, going up. I've known her since she was five years old, she's a real achiever. One thing that's not in here is that she was a member of the Allshore Middle School Band in 7th and 8th grade back in the day, and very proud of her, and really want to congratulate Sharon and Manny for doing such a great job with her daughter. That's my report.
Thank you, Council President Brennan. I just have to add, on the Memorial Day event, Tom has, or Council President Brennan, has brought the kids there every year for as many years as I can remember. It's got to be 15 or 20.
Eighteen.
Or eighteen.
Who's counting?
But this year is his last year. He is retiring, and we want to congratulate him on his retirement from Belmar School, but we're going to certainly miss him at all the Memorial Day events and Veterans Day events, so we really do appreciate all the work that you did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
A quick applause.
The other thing in my report, I want to mention about Memorial Day weekend, we had unbelievable weather. I can't remember the weather being that good for Memorial Day in a long, long time. But I want to mention Gene Quarry, our beach director, you know, every time I mention somebody about what a great job they're doing, because Gene just happens to do a great job all the time, I always forget him. But I wanted to say that he's been working since before January, trying to get everybody in place, putting the new computers in the booths, making sure the credit card machines are working, and everything, all his work and all his effort went on without a hitch for Memorial Day weekend with the amount of people that we had down here, so I really want to commend him and his staff that he has, and all the people that work down there, because to put 90 people together and make sure that they all show up, and they get our bathrooms cleaned, and do everything that they do down the beach, and especially when we had Memorial Day weekend, it was beautiful. And, of course, Mike Campbell getting the beach ready, and his guys getting the beach ready, so it was, it was great to see the great weather, and everything went smooth, so I just wanted to commend those guys. And that is, that ends my report. So, we will move on to public session on any, anything on the resolution calendar. If anybody has anything. Yes, come on up. No, it's resolution calendar. Okay, seeing none. April?
We have a motion to close the public session.
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First, we have consent agenda number one. There are a couple of changes, but first, Resolution 2019-123, there is a typo in that, the sentence that says the license is still held in pocket, needs to be removed. The license is active, so we'll fix that. And then, Resolutions 128 and 132, we are pulling from the agenda and will vote on at a later date. So, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion. I'm going to recuse myself, because these are ABC actions, I just want to repeat again, as a professional musician with a business relationship with more than one of these license holders, it's inappropriate for me to vote, or even to be on the desk, so I'm going to recuse myself. Thank you.
April, do we have to have a resolution to make the changes, or?
No.
She verbalized the change, that's fine.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
So, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda number one, as amended?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Okay, Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCracken?
Yes.
Okay. Next, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda number two?
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCracken?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have second reading and public hearing on ordinance 2019-18. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 40 regarding the appeal provisions for planning and zoning board of adjustment applications. Does anyone from the public want to comment on this ordinance? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-18?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCracken?
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2019-19. This is an ordinance amending certain salaries. Does anyone from the public want to comment on this ordinance? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll second.
And then, can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-19?
April, just a clarification, these are not to adopt certain salaries, this is just to update the ranges.
Correct.
Right, so no one is getting any?
Yeah.
No, this is to update for the seasonal staff to be in line with what we're currently paying them and the new, the new laws.
Right.
When we, when we had to put all the salary guides in place that haven't been done for years in January, we forgot the kids that work on the sand, and that's what this ordinance is, is just adding them. So, everything else is in place, it's just adding, because we didn't have an ordinance to pay them, the kids that do the cleanup on the beach.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-19?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCracken?
Yes.
Next is second reading and public hearing on ordinance 2019-20. This is amending the ordinance for the placement of small cell equipment and wireless poles. Does anyone from the public want to comment on this ordinance?
Yes.
Anita Hacarelli, Riverdale Apartments, could I get an explanation of this? Does this have to do, like, what we have been last year with the poles being out on the beach?
No, no, this is a new, can I take it, Mayor?
Yes.
This is a, these are going to eventually make the cell antennas on water tanks obsolete. This is the next telecommunications advancement. 4G is what we've been doing now, now they've got 5G. I forget what G stands for, but that's the next one. And what happened is, the FCC has required all municipalities to adopt ordinances which require us to review and approve these new applications on 5G from Verizon and all the rest of them, within 60 days. And what they are, eventually, and every town's going to have this, you're going to see these boxes on your telephones. So, suppose it's going to be faster, cheaper, cheaper, faster communication wise, and eventually, there'll eventually be a 6G or 7G, you know, there won't be any more, I think, you'll start to see less antennas on water tanks. So, but this is the ordinance that we need to adopt to comply with the FCC requirements.
Okay, so the last time it was, they were putting poles up, and then there was, there was a talk about the bidding, you know?
Yeah, but that had nothing to do, that, no.
So, this is just something we have to do?
Yes, and this deals with cell phones, you know, this deals with the communications eventually for your cell phones and all your different IT equipment.
So, we're just putting boxes on telephone poles that are already there, we're not adding poles anywhere?
We're not adding poles.
We're not, you know, elaborating?
And if there's an area that is underground utilities in the town, the companies would have to put lines underground for those areas.
Now, are they going to have to bid? Is this a bidding thing? Because you said, like, that was the issue, that was an issue we had with the?
They'll have to provide, they'll have to probably pay a reasonable rent to the borough to utilize our poles.
And then, we get to decide if you guys agree with that, or they?
What do you mean?
So, say, they wanted to do it, and then, and you guys said, okay, Verizon's going to do that. So, do you guys just do it, or do we get to vote on it, or?
Well, no, they would have to make an applica, they, let's just use Verizon or T-Mobile or whoever, they'd have to make an application to the planning board to get approvals. The approvals would have to be with the consent of the town, because those are our poles, and we would be paid some revenue for it, just like we're paid revenue for antennas on water tanks, you know, they're renting them.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stay tuned, this is a new technology, this is.
Mr.?
We had a big issue, we had a big issue with the last?
It has nothing to do with street skating, nothing to do with that.
And it was about poles, and they put poles everywhere?
Yeah, understood.
And taken, yeah, okay.
Mr. Daskey, this is a requirement for each town.
By the federal FCC, the federal communication people, that's correct, that's correct.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Alright, April?
Somebody in the back, Mayor.
Somebody in the back?
Gene Cream?
This is, yes, ordinance 20, yes.
Just in time.
Alright, good. Want to just hand him that, John? There you go. Thank you.
By the way, I want to say, I want to say I'm glad that the mayor and council are both are looking at this small cell development by the telecommunications company.
I can't hear myself.
There you go.
I was going to say, I'm glad the mayor and council are looking at developing standards for these telecommunications companies to come in and, or for small cell cellular service. I did take a quick look at the proposed ordinance, and currently telecommunications facilities are a conditional use with the planning board. Has this been referred over to the planning board for their comments?
Yes, every ordinance like this, whatever ordinance is adopted on first reading which deals with land use, it automatically is referred to the planning board, because they have to review it to confirm whether or not it's consistent with our master plan. I don't know if we got any response from them at all about it, but the answer is yes.
Oh, it was, it was?
Alright, April?
No, it wasn't.
Oh, the answer is no. Why wasn't it sent to the? Alright, well then, we ought to hold off on this and send it to the planning, let's, good point. Mayor, I would recommend that we hold off on this and consider it after the planning board has an opportunity to review it. By law, thank you, by law, after we adopt an ordinance on first reading that deals with land use, which is what you're talking about, it has to go to the planning board, because the planning board has to determine whether or not the ordinance is compliant with our master plan, and we're going to do that now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess then, the best opportunity for technical comments about the proposed ordinance would be when the planning board brings it up on their, hopefully on their agenda. Okay, I just want to mention, I guess the last time that we've had something like this, well, there's been a couple of approaches on the municipality, one of them being right down there by Belmar Terrace Apartments, on the corner of 17th and Ocean. We also had, I guess Verizon was in here at one time in the past, looking to install small cells along the boardwalk. Also, it's my understanding that we already have a legacy agreement with Verizon for this building. I don't know.
We do. We do.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And if my memory serves me correct, also, there was, I don't know whether it was actually, whether it was actually approved, but also in the redevelopment zone on top of the Bank America building. So, this is, this is really, I guess, nothing new. We've already had a couple of these, and I don't think we've taken any franchise or entered into any franchise agreement, it's always been site specific, like it has at the Mayfair Hotel. I'll tell you what, I'll reserve my comments about the nuts and the bolts of this thing, if and when the planning board brings it up on one of their agendas. But one thing I did notice that was missing, especially when you're talking about right-of-way, there was, the document was silent with respect to insurance requirements. I think we all have a little bit of concern about that. It's within the same right-of-way where our sidewalks are, and now we're going to potentially have additional hardware out there within that same area. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is that Belmar is somewhat unique, is that somewhere between 30 and 50% of our overhead utility is not located within the public right-of-way. It's rear line, property line occupation along, you know, it's in the back of homes. So, this is a very sensitive issue here. Also, lately with the 5G, there's been a lot of concern about EMF and potential effects on property values, and also, people have health concerns about it. I'll let it go at that, but if you're going to refer it to the planning board, I'll make a point to go to that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer, thank you.
Mayor, I would recommend then that we table this until, and send it to the planning board for review, and then come back for second reading.
Okay, so we need to close the public hearing first?
Yes, a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, thank you.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, a motion to table the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have second reading and public hearing on ordinance 2019-21. This is amending the beachfront regulations regarding the use of tents and canopies. Does anyone from the public want to speak on this ordinance? Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-21.
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCracken?
Yes.
Next is the second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2019-22, amending Chapter 4, Department of Finance. This is to change the fees for the use of Taylor Pavilion. Does anyone from the public want to speak on this ordinance? Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close the public hearing?
Hold on one second.
We have somebody?
Mike, come on up.
Mike Wong, Ocean Avenue, resident, and I'd just like to say it's about time. Good job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, April?
Right, a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
And then next, we have resolution two thousand nineteen one thirty-eight. This is the resolution to establish the fees for the use of Taylor Pavilion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
And then last, we have first reading and introduction of ordinance two thousand nineteen twenty-three. This is to amend Chapter Nineteen to add two handicap parking spaces. Do we have a motion to offer it for first reading?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
Yes, second.
Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Okay, public session. Anybody wanna come up and talk about anything? Come on up.
Sandra.
Thank you. That's good, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Sandy Caputo, seventeen zero five Surf Avenue.
Hi, Sandy.
You know, Tom, what's coming. First of all, I'm gonna say we have terrific lifeguards. This is not a criticism of the lifeguards. Now I want to discuss football playing on the beach during beach badge hours, along with frisbees, soccer balls, kite flying. And it's not just the ball, it's the two-hundred-pound person running, not watching where he's going, while looking up, going to catch the ball. Flying the kite, not watching where he's running, while looking up in the sky. It's very difficult to relax on the beach when you need to watch out for these things. Thirty, thirty-five years ago, and I was on the beach then, this was not allowed. Anybody that was a lifeguard back then should remember, you might remember, that this was not allowed on the beach. Our current lifeguards have no idea about it, they've never been told. So any of you, take a walk along the beach. Start maybe at Eighth Avenue and start going south, you're gonna see this on the weekends. Football's flying everywhere. I'd like to see this dealt with.
It does not require lifeguard to get down from the stand, walk over to the people, apologize for ruining their football game. All it needs is, it should be handled like everything else. Lifeguard blows the whistle and points, once a lifeguard blows the whistle and points at you, you know you're doing something you shouldn't be doing. They can do these activities before nine or after six. Or there's a place on the beach, if they go way down past Twentieth, where usually there aren't any people. But I'm talking about this going on right where everybody is, right in the surf, right where everybody's sitting. So this is my ninth time here talking about this.
Ninth summer, right?
And, the thirteenth time that this has been brought up by someone here. So I hope maybe this summer, we can make the beach a little safer.
I totally agree with you. And what we have to do is work together with our lifeguards and our beach police personnel, educate them to make sure that they're looking out for these kind of things. And what it is, it's the education of them, and, you know, Captain Cox is gonna make sure that, yeah, yeah, and we're gonna talk to the lifeguards because it is a problem. I mean, you know, I'm on the beach a lot, and I see it, and I get where you're coming from. So as long as they're educating them, if there's a room up by the boardwalk and nobody's sitting up there, we push them up there, or they have to go somewhere else.
Or somewhere else, or before or after beach badge hours. Again, we have terrific lifeguards, but back when this was being enforced, they weren't even born yet. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You could just pull that mic out. There you go.
Wireless, there you go.
Rick Flanders, Pine Tree Way. So I want to address the new rules for veterans or military personnel beach access. And I was on active duty before I retired, and, you know, thankfully, Belmar does this, a lot of towns, beach towns in New Jersey do it. They allow free access to active-duty veterans, retirees, which is great. I'm super thankful. I'm not an individual that demands any kind of thanks for a service or anything like that or any kind of extra benefit. So when I was on active duty, my family and I always got on the beach for free. I showed my military ID. Awesome, unbelievable benefit. When I retired, nothing changed. Unbelievable benefit. This Memorial Day weekend, I found myself with my family having to prove to, what I'm assuming is a sixteen- or a seventeen-year-old girl, and then another adult, that I was a disabled veteran. So I had to prove in front of my son and my wife, and a line behind me, that something's wrong with me, so I could get the same, sorry, the same privilege or whatever for beach access. And now, so I went through a gambit of emotions. First, I was embarrassed, and when I went home that day, I was mad, I was angry. My wife is super angry, you're probably better off talking to me. And then I was confused again, as to why this, like, who thought it would be a good idea to, I guess, make us go up there with some type of proof that you're a disabled veteran? And then I realized that they took away the beach access to just veterans, combat veterans that didn't, or even a retiree, unless you were a disabled veteran. So someone who committed twenty years of their life to the military and then retired, if they somehow got out with any kind of disability, they do not have the same benefit as someone who's a disabled veteran or an active-duty military personnel. So that confused me, like, how could that be a good idea? Who voted on that? Like, maybe it just wasn't well-thought-out, probably. So, yeah, so if I could maybe suggest something, if I could bring, or any other disabled veteran can just bring something to the Borough Hall stating that they are disabled veterans, they can get a beach pass for the year, or otherwise, I mean, it's, you're putting somebody through something, you shouldn't have to explain it to anybody who's not a service member. You know what I mean?
Yeah, we'll talk to our beach director. The problem, the issue we had with the changes is that we started making changes on how we were dealing with the beach, and then come to find out, there is a state statute that regulates us on different things that we could do on the beach. I've already talked to our Assembly people to try to get that state statute changed, but we can't, as borough, override the state statute, and that's why the changes were made. But I'll talk to the beach director, you have a good point, that if you live in town and you are a vet, that you should be able to get a season badge, and just, this way you can go on and off. But I'll discuss that with him.
And as, going forward, would a VA identification, would that, would that work?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
With your event, what you went through, that was addressed by myself, Jeanne Corey, and Mr. Kirschbaum. First of all, we apologize that that happened.
I appreciate it.
As soon as it happened and we found out about it, we went down, educated the woman that you dealt with.
She was professional, she was very nice.
No, I get it. But we also educated her to say that if somebody comes up and shows a ID, if it doesn't say disabled, and the gentleman says he's disabled, there's more than disabled, as you know, because I think you were asked, than a physical ailment. So again, if somebody's coming up and claiming that they are disabled, then they are to accept that and say, have a good day. There's also been something put in each ticket booth now, dealing with veterans in just that thing. So again, it was an education that needed to be done immediately. Unfortunately, you were the one that brought it to the forefront, but it has been addressed. It won't be a problem. I do agree, maybe the easiest thing to do is a season badge for you and for anybody else who served, and thank you for your service. But again, it was addressed, it was addressed quickly, and it will not happen again to anyone else, and it is embarrassing, and it shouldn't happen, but it did, and we addressed it immediately, within hours.
I appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Rick, excuse me, Rick, up here. Excuse me. What is your last name again?
Flanders, F.L.
And you're on Pine Tree Way, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Thank you, and I'm sorry it happened to you. Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, I'm Maria Rondanaro, twelve forty-six Pine Tree Way. I loved our memorial service for Memorial Day, I thought that was wonderful. And I'm just here in support of my next-door neighbor Ricky, who served our country. And also just, it brought to me a gap in, I know that we've changed it, that we used to be able to allow first responders and all veterans on our beach. And I'd really love for us to reconsider that for the future because, you know, we do allow disabled veterans, but so many people, as a social worker, I know this firsthand, so many people don't go through the process of getting their disability because it's very painful. And the things that they've seen and done are very painful. And so I'd like in, I'm very happy to see how respectful and responsive you've been to this, and I'd love to see us go further with it, so that Belmar continues to have its, you know, pride of people who surf. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Shari Russo, twelve eighteen Briarwood Road. Can you hear me now? No.
No.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Really? This is not a sensitive microphone at all, is it? Shari Russo, twelve eighteen Briarwood Road. I just want to also, maybe you do or don't know, that I'm always very active with veterans, and I know a lot was talked about in here, improving stuff, and I know a lot of times veterans are willing to, you know, toughen it out a little bit, you know? And a lot of veterans that were wounded never wrote down that they were wounded in their military papers, and retired wounded or left wounded, and there is no documentation on that. And I would just ask that we would consider that for our veterans, to know people that served every single day of their life, so we could have our freedom. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say, the state statute, unfortunately for us, the state statute's really clear about who can be given free beach access and who can't. I mean, unless they're on that statute list, we can't do it. I think what I would recommend to anybody who wants to see about addressing this issue is contact our state legislators and see what they can do about moving this in the state. Make a change at the state level because we would love to be able to give all our veterans free beach access and our first responders, but we can't violate state law.
And in the past, are you saying that we violated our state law?
Yeah, we didn't know it, but we were, absolutely.
We didn't know it, but we're violating, and were there consequences to us violating that? Did we just step up and say, we want to take care of our veterans, and they didn't go after us? Or was there, I mean, I'm not exactly sure what happened here, they changed it.
Now that we publicly stated we know the law, I don't think we really could do that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Now that we've stated that we understand the state statute.
So are you saying that nobody knew the law before, and that's why we didn't do it?
No. I'll be honest with you, it was a surprise to me that first responders were not permitted free beach access. I was really surprised, but.
And veterans also is on that?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and so did that just change right now, am I right? I'm just following what Ricky said. I mean, I could be wrong here, I don't know.
I would check with the attorney, but I remember what the state.
So that just, so he's saying that, you know, the problem isn't that Belmar doesn't want to have veterans get on for free, he's saying that the problem is the state statute.
That's correct.
But am I true, am I correct that it changed this year?
No.
No, no.
So we never let veterans on for free?
Oh, I don't know what you should do.
No, there is, there is, there is a provision in the statute for veterans. The problem is the first responders and all the other people that were getting on the beach for free is not in the state statute, and we were not allowed to do that. It was brought to our attention by another attorney who was gonna file a lawsuit against us. So that's why we were made aware of the state statute, and we had to make the changes. So we followed that rule.
All right, because I heard that you say it was disabled veterans, I couldn't tell if you were saying it was all veterans.
I don't have the statute right in front of me.
No, I have it in front of me. The mayor's correct.
But it is, it has a provision in there for veterans to get on, and I'm not, I'm not sure which one.
All right, wonderful, wonderful.
All veterans, the statute does not allow all veterans to get on for free. It does, it does allow disabled.
Only disabled veterans.
I'm sorry?
Are you saying only? Sorry, only disabled and active?
Well, there are other people who are allowed, but in terms of veterans, only disabled veterans.
Okay, thank you.
I'm already working with the Assembly and the Senate to try to get that changed.
We need to change the state law, it's not right.
So by the, hopefully by next summer, we'll have that straightened out.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Kyle. You can take that out of there.
Kyle Rosatello, Fourteenth Avenue, Belmar. May I approach? I have a drawing for you gentlemen to look at and ladies to look at.
Sure. This is a nice drawing. Should we do this?
And I'm not an architect. Back in two thousand eleven, I approached mayor and council back then about turning Fourteenth Avenue between K Street and L Street one-way. It was done for one summer, basically so I would get off everybody's back. Safety obviously was not an issue back then. Well, I also have a letter in front of me from two thousand seventeen saying about the one-way streets on Sixteenth and on the east side of Main Street. We had a community meeting here on May sixteenth. That day, I went out. On Sixteenth Avenue four hundred block, I measured curb-to-curb three hundred and fifty-seven inches. Thirteenth Avenue two hundred block, one-way streets, three hundred and fifty-seven inches curb-to-curb. Seventeenth Avenue two hundred block, three hundred and fifty-seven inches curb-to-curb. My street, between K Street and L, three hundred inches curb-to-curb. It's a no-brainer. Why is it not a permanent one-way street?
This is gonna be, we're gonna push this over to Captain Cox in the Police Department. Maybe the chief and yourself could take a look at it, and with our traffic department. I don't know why it was one-way and then it was turned back. I'm surprised.
It was only turned one-way just for one summer.
And I have no idea why it was.
Like, in twenty-eleven, you're talking about?
That was two thousand eleven.
Yes, I could speak with the chief and our traffic safety officer. We'll probably have to get engineer study, take a look at it, and we'll have to look into it to see if it's feasible to do that one-way.
Wasn't there a problem, now that I'm thinking about it, wasn't there a problem?
There was something, but I don't remember.
From K Street, we made it one-way from thirty-five, and the state made us.
No, well, that, no, we were, I'm talking, if you look at the drawing, the drawing shows you coming in from Thirteenth Avenue, K Street, go south on Thirteenth to Fourteenth, you have no choice but to turn, unless you're gonna drive into a wall.
I do remember it was one-way for one summer. I don't know why it was turned back.
That was, that was, that has nothing to do with this part of it, but yeah, at one time, there was a one-way from thirty-five to Thirteenth, I don't know if it was going in or coming out, whichever way it was, and that was, I think that was a state.
Because it intersected with the state road.
That was, I think that was a state thing at the time, but this is local. So that's what we're looking at. We're looking at too, and I talked to a lot of the neighbors, and they said, they don't see any reason why it's not a permanent one-way street, which is the way we're looking at it coming in, which is most practical. Come in from Thirteenth Avenue along K to Fourteenth, make a right on Fourteenth, then you go to L Street, and then you've got your two-way on L Street.
All right, well, the captain, the chief, and the traffic department will take a look at it, and then we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, because I had measured. Okay, 'cause I had measured, I don't have it, it's in my folder, but I had measured, like, the, the width of a vehicle, and then the width of the street, and I think it leaves us, if you have a car parked on one side, and a car parked on the other, and one going down the street, you have 12 inches of space.
Right.
That's it.
Right, and no room for two cars to pass it.
Oh, no way. I mean, there's no...
I know your street, you're absolutely right.
There's no way. The other thing, I don't know, I don't know how to do this without my husband finding this one out. This has been a secret so far, and I gotta try to keep it a secret from him, but on Saturday...
You're on live right now, so...
I know.
He's watching.
How am I supposed to do this?
I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Executive session?
As long as he doesn't find out, 'cause it's a surprise for him.
Just speak right to the camera.
It's a surprise for him, maybe I should just tell you. Anyway, there's a, um, there's a company out there called Quilts of Valor, and it's a Quilts of Valor award that my husband is getting for his, from 1969 to 1973 Vietnam War Navy Corpsman attached to the Marine Corps, and he is being awarded a Quilts of Valor, and they're coming to my house.
Oh, very nice.
And they said, you know, "The more, the merrier," so Mayor and Council, I'd love it if you could be there, "And could we arrange something with the Police Department?" Because I have the feeling that little block is gonna be pretty crowded, just for an hour.
All right.
It's at three o'clock. So, he has no idea, he thinks, this is what he's...
You just let us know the date, if you wanna keep that secret.
When is it? I know, exactly.
Kyle, when is it? What's the date?
Saturday, June the 22nd, at three o'clock.
Three o'clock, okay.
Three o'clock.
Thank you.
So, what I'm going to do is tell him, like, a day or two before, 'cause the end of the month is my 65th birthday.
Oh.
So, I'm gonna kinda tell him that people are gonna be stopping by for my birthday, and it's not really gonna be for my birthday whatsoever.
Okay.
So, if you could be there, that would be great.
Okay, great.
And please, look into my one-way street.
Will do. Oh, sorry, Si, I didn't see your hand up.
Hi, Joe Mangione, South Lake Drive. Uh, just another traffic question. The street coming into town on, on Eighth Avenue from 35 to Main Street, when you get to that light on Main Street, it's chaotic, people don't know if they're in the left-hand lane, they're going straight, as opposed to 10th, where it's very clear, you got a, a lane for turn, a lane for straight. Can we do something about that on, on Eighth Avenue? I've seen cars almost hit each other a number of times.
Yeah, it would be nice if it was leaned off there. The problem is, there is a state road, so, Captain, if you can contact them and, and see if they can come down and do with it. That little section of Eighth Avenue happens to be State Highway 71, so...
Oh, is that right?
We, we can't touch it until they give us the okay, but it's something that we could ask them, 'cause I, I know the, the problem you're talking about.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Si Reymar, Fifth Ave, Belmar. Badge checkers, I was on the beach, you know, over the weekend, and we have a, should I go up on this? Uh, there's a, you know, there's a badge checker on Fifth, and there's a badge checker on Sixth, and I noticed for the first time, that now there's a badge checker on the staircase that goes down from Cruise Cafe, down to the beach, I guess because of the staircase or whatever? And I guess that's to, you know, prevent people from going into Cruise Cafe, to walk down the staircase. Who's paying for that? Is Cruise Cafe paying for that? Why don't we just shut the staircase down? I mean, here we are with a $33 million deficit, and, I mean, and it's, every little thing counts, the overtime counts, the having an extra badge checker counts. I mean, I, I was on the beach, and fortunately, I was able to spend like three or four hours there, I didn't see a single person walk down that staircase. So, you got a badge checker there. Now, you take that badge checker, you multiply it by seven, you multiply it 26 weeks a year, I mean, it's those little things that make a contribution to the overall budget, in terms of creating an unnecessary expense. Shut the staircase down! If, if Cruise Ca-, if Cruise Cafe wants to serve food on the beach, let them walk around to Fifth Avenue, or let them walk around to Fourth Avenue. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. The other two things are just...
Si, just before you stop. I noticed that last year, too, and I had, I thought the same thing you did, so thanks for, for bringing that up, I do think that's something we should look into.
I mean, it's, it's kinda ridiculous, you know? Just two update things. One, geez, I don't know, this was, I guess, two meetings ago, we talked about after the Seafood Fest, that we were gonna get a statement of profit or loss.
Yes.
Do we expect that in the near future?
They're still putting the numbers together, we're waiting for one department to give us their numbers, but we're still working...
Okay, maybe by the...
I was, I was hoping it was done tonight.
Maybe by the next meeting? And is that gonna be, like, posted on the website, or is that gonna be handed out here at the meeting, or...
Well, it's, yeah, hopefully we'll have it by the next meeting.
Okay.
So, we're trying to get that, it's funny that I asked the CFO about that today.
Okay.
So, if we have all the numbers.
Terrific. Last but not least, Mr. Brennan, I know that you're one of those guys that are full of accolades, and now I'm talking about four months ago, when Mabley played in the NCAA. Day after we had the council meeting, I was expecting that when I pulled down 10th Avenue, that I would see the sign, and I would see, "Congratulations, Mabley, on, you know, making it to the NCAA finals." I never saw the sign. I went back the next day, I never saw the sign. And I've never heard anything about it since. And what that goes through is follow-up, you know? And that's one of the things that I think, as much as you guys do a great job, the follow-up. And in addition to the follow-up, we come up here and, you know, I know I've been a pain for you guys, you know, even though I support you and all that, but, you know, the thing is that, you know, we have these citizens that come here, and we voice our opinion. Classic example is the last meeting we had, when it had to do with the, the budget. You know how crowded the room was. It was standing-room only, people were in the lobby, people were outside, and a lot of them came up here and they voiced their opinion about the fact that they were unhappy with the 21.7% municipal part of the increase. But none of that communication was taken into consideration, you just approved it anyway. Wouldn't you think that when you have a town that shows up, that you would do what you did with the, I don't know, whatever that ordinance was, that, you know, you know, you have to adjourn to go back on, and have an executive session and reconsider? You know, my understanding is that government is at the will of the people. You know, and the will of the people that night was obvious, that we didn't want baloney. Those people lived and, and worked their whole lives in those, in those small towns, they're gonna have to do whatever they're gonna have to do, because that's not only the people that are getting laid off there, that's the, the satellite organization that served that, those companies and everything. Georgia and Pacific Lumber. Now, it, I saw another thing recently, uh, the Reading Eagle, it's a, it's a newspaper, Reading, Pennsylvania, small newspaper, a couple of hundred people working for it and everything, and they went bankruptcy, and a hedge fund, whatever that is, I have no idea about that type of situation. Hedge fund took them over, bought them out of, what do you call, and they, they fired everybody. And they offered them jobs back at like 20, 25% lower than what their, what their salaries were. Things are tough, they're very tough. I've known tough times in my life. For three years, I lived like a nomad, running around this country, job to job, sleeping on the side of the road. Not nice sleeping in a car. We have to have something from you. You have to make cuts. There are ways of doing it, it can be done by furlough. It was done, some of the cuts were done in the, up in the city, I told you, with, with Koch. Another way he did it, about, that's not the end of the world, getting paid off. Life still goes on, and you still have to make it, even if you're paid off. Now, when I mentioned what Koch did in, up in the city, he got rid of, I think it was like 30,000 people. Now, all right, that's New York City, they got over 100,000 people working for him, but God knows what they got now. But that was a, a good hit, then. But what they did was this, the layoffs went in, and the, the people got laid off, and they went into other things, and everything, for the time being. But they were first on the, on the list to be called back. I remember about 2004, or '05, a guy got a job, Brooklyn Borough Commander of the Police, and, and that's, you know, it's a big shot, the next, the next step is, you're, you're being considered for Commissioner. But anyway, he came, he was one of the guys that got laid off, or fired in that situation. But he, he went, did something for a couple of years, then his notice came back, to come back on the force, and he did, and he finally made Borough Commander. Like I said, it's not the end of the world, but cuts have to be made. It's a show of good faith with the people who voted for you, who said, "We're tired of the eight years prior, we want cuts, we need cuts." It's, "Please do this for us." All up and down the line, I don't want people to be paid off, and I didn't wanna be paid off myself when it happened. But thi- this is the way things are, please do this. It's not the 21%, it's the idea that everything is on the taxpayer, and nothing across the border, the way it should be, equaled out. Now, like I said, once again, I don't wanna hurt anybody, but this is life. Times are tough in this town, and we have to fear the viper now.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. April?
Can we have a motion to close the public session and adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.